I call the order, the April 24th, Westlake City Schools Board of Education Meeting, roll call.
Purena.
Here.
Lizinski.
Here.
Panukin.
Here.
Kraft.
Here.
Stole.
Here.
And Mr. Plantner, we have some special guests who are doing a presentation for us in a few minutes, but would they be willing to lead us in the pledge tonight?
Absolutely.
So everyone get their rights.
Fly over here.
Say if they want to go up to the podium, it'll pick up the mic.
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much.
Like to count in too, do you hear that?
That was fantastic. As always, we'd like to start our board meetings with our mission and vision statement. And our mission is we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives and to contribute to society. Our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement and tangible results. And thank you for all of our students and parents and visitors that are here tonight. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? Is there motion to approve?
Don't move. Second.
Sorry. All those in favor? Go ahead.
Stole.
Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Purena.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Goggins for introduction of her son.
We are really excited tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of people here, many students along with their parents and the principal's administration. And I think I see Mrs. Kelber over there, school counselor from our elementary school as well. Mr. Plantner is going to introduce us to these folks in a moment where they're going to be presenting regarding student ambassadors and PE peer partners with Unified Sports. So, Mr. Plantner, I would gladly turn it over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Goggins.
Good evening, everybody. We have a number of students here with us this evening, as well as a couple of staff members who are going to help us out, presenting a couple of programs that we started this year at Westlake Elementary and that we're optimistic about carrying on into the future. So, Mrs. Kelber is our third grade counselor. She is here today with Molly Metzger and Matthew Korea. They're going to talk about our student ambassadors program that Mrs. Kelber has worked on to establish our school along with Mrs. Bale, our fourth grade counselor. They started that program this year and they're going to tell you all about it. And then Mrs. Mecha, who is our elementary special education coordinator, she's going to be joined by Hunter Melwood, Brynlee Adamich, Finley Barnes and Otto Emrich. They are going to talk to us about our peer partners and our Unified Sports program, which is really intended to be a pilot elementary program for this region. So, we're pretty excited about what that could mean for the future of Unified Sports in this area as well. So, Mrs. Mecha is going to present that. Mrs. Hayworth, our counselor, third counselor at Westlake Elementary, has been instrumental in getting that program up and running as well. So, I wanted to recognize her. And of course, all of our house principals, Mrs. Maurice, Mr. San Filippo and Mrs. Tucker, who are here this evening, have helped with these programs as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hayworth, no, I'm sorry, to Mrs. Kelber and to Mrs. Mecha and our students to tell you more about it.
So, thank you for having us. So, Matthew and Molly are going to be presenting our student ambassadors program. We were practicing this, we kind of did a tag team approach. Do we have the first slide up, please? All right. The student ambassadors, this is a first year for our program. If you want to go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So, again, we have Molly Metzger, fourth grader, and Matthew Korea. And you guys want to explain what our first picture is up here?
So, it says be the eye in kind. Um, this is a picture of our first meeting and it symbolizes how we are all kind, caring, respectful and responsible.
So, a little bit of our ambassadors, it's part of their mission is to be kind, respectful, responsible and safe, right? Going to go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So, what exactly is student ambassadors? So, we know you guys can all read the slide that is in front of you, but we wanted Matthew and Molly to be able to explain to you guys what we feel student ambassadors is.
I think student ambassadors is a leadership program where we look for the best interest in our fellow classmates. And I support the idea that it's students ambassadors because they might understand better what their classmate is experiencing.
I did not teach him to say that. Molly, do you have anything to add?
I think it's a program that encourages leadership and it's students, not teachers, because they have a better understanding of the students that are having a rough time.
Very nice job, guys. Go ahead and you guys move on to the next slide. So, a little background there, if you didn't have a chance through the slide, we had about 125 applicants and we picked 20 students from third grade and 20 from fourth grade to kind of be our final crew for this time around. So, it's a big honor this year to be the first kind of cohort to go through this program. Part of the application process, they had to answer why they wanted to be a student ambassador. And those are just some various answers we had on the board. Matthew and Molly, you want to go ahead and share why you guys wanted to be student ambassadors?
I want to be a student ambassador because I know I have the qualities and characteristics of a leader.
Um, I also think that I have the characteristics and qualities of a leader and also because I feel that I could make West a better place.
And we'll get more into what we think qualities of a leader are later, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and move on to the next one. So, what will we do? What are we thinking we're going to do with our group?
Um, so what we'll do with our group is we will have monthly meetings that will explain how we are helping West become a better place to be a student or a teacher.
And we can make a lot of changes in the school.
What's been your favorite part so far about? And we were just getting off the ground, we've only had a few meetings. What's been your favorite part so far?
Making the web.
Making the web, we'll talk more about that one.
Talking about the qualities of a leader.
Talking about the qualities of a leader was another activity. We also have our student ambassadors go on to our classrooms and kind of promote our kindness week or college and career week, they get to do announcements for the classroom. So, that's been exciting for them too. Next slide, please. So, these are a couple of pictures from activities we've done. Our very first one, it's kind of hard to see up there, but where they're all sitting in a circle on the floor, they had to make a web. Who wants to explain that one?
Um.
Do you both want to take it?
You can.
Yeah.
So, it symbolizes how we are all connected. For example, Molly is my sister's reading buddy.
Yeah. And that is a different connection than any other connections in this room. And that web symbolized how it, with the fourth grade web and the third grade grade web, they were each unique and no line was the same.
And why are the student ambassadors when holding the pieces of the web for this activity?
Because we are the ones who are supporting our fellow classmates and peers and connecting everybody.
Yeah, so we thought that was a nice little iceberg activity. It was a chance for the kids to get to know each other, but also it just demonstrated how our student ambassadors group are representative of the leadership we need in our building to keep us all connected and going. The other two on the left and the right-hand side was one of our second activities we did. We talked about the qualities of a leader. Do you guys want to explain more about that one?
So, one of the qualities that I did, as you can see me in the picture.
He has my green shirt over there.
Yeah. It's open-minded. To be open-minded is to work with your teammates and make their idea a great idea.
And if you go to the next slide, also, we got some more from that day of our leadership qualities. Go ahead, Molly.
Um, being trustworthy means that that leader will stay true to their word and you can trust them with a secret, they will never let it slip past.
And all of our student ambassadors embrace these qualities. That's why we spent time exploring them more deeply. And I think we might have one more for student ambassadors. Another part of the application process and things we've talked about during every meeting is how we want to improve West. So, these were some of the ideas that we received on the applications, but Matthew and Molly, give us your best idea you have for improving West.
I have, I have an idea of how we can improve it. The, the two-sided tables are for you to sit on either side, but everything falls out of them. So, it doesn't need, it doesn't even need to be expensive. We could just have a cardboard piece and tape it to the part of the desk where you're not using it. So, so you don't waste time and have to grab it like a folder that fell out or a paper.
In addition to his response, um, once I saw my classmate and table neighbor reaching for his math folder in his desk, but then every single paper and item in his desk just toppled out the other side and he had to crawl under the desk to retrieve them when we were in the middle of a class. I think that every class should have designated bathroom breaks because it's uncomfortable if you don't.
Um, and thank you guys, you guys did a wonderful job. You guys want to give us? I will say this group is a very, it's not just sit down and me and Mrs. Bale talking at them. Those are all their ideas. We made prompt with the questions and ideas, like the topic for discussion, but that is all of them coming through and coming up with the wording and everything. So, very nice job, guys.
Do they have a moment to take any questions from the board that the board may have? I don't know if anybody has any.
I have a comment. I think another characteristic of being a leader is just being willing to step up and do a job that needs to be done because so many times people aren't willing to do that. They sit back. So, I, I am very appreciative of the fact that you do, you took the challenge and you stepped up to it and I think that's very admirable.
Do you remember that trait? You did that one too.
Confidence.
Yes, confidence.
Confidence is also crucial.
I agree and I like your comment.
Anything else or more?
I was wondering if either of you will be pulling petitions.
No, I, I just a comment and just seeing the two of you being able to present and communicate your thoughts and do it so clearly and confidently, it's just so impressive and you're doing a very, very nice job.
Thank you.
We'll turn it over to Mrs. Mecha.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next thing we're going to discuss, our students are here for are our peer partners in PE. We have started a program where our peers go into our modified PE class and we work on different sports and athletic skills and teamwork and all of those great qualities that these four are going to discuss. So, we have Hunter, Finley, Otto and Brynlee. Can you click? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm with you now. Yeah. Inspired by your Unified Sports Program currently at Laborers and Mills School, students with special needs are linked with typical peers during modified PE competitions and go on to increase social interaction and hope for more social inclusion with in sports.
Thank you, Hunter.
The program run by PE features Mr. O'Doherty and Mrs. Pratt. Two sessions each meet once a week. The program supports 18 students in modified PE and 16 third grade peer models. We volunteer to miss recess in order to participate.
And that's what makes that even more special is they give up their time outside with their other peers to come in and work with the peers that are part of that PE class. So, and they do it willingly, they want to. So, we're very grateful that you guys take that time. Most kids don't want to miss recess, but they see how much fun and the value of, of going in and helping with the class that they go into. Okay, Otto.
We start with a warm-up walk with somebody to help teach a new skill, then annual stations. Some skills that we practice, they can possibly be down the tape and rolling. Different games and activities we have play. Something like a carnival, bowling, moves, basketball and sports. I like to be a peer partner because, for example, it helps others, others learn how to share, throw and play basketball. I like the basketball team with the kids because I play sports and I like to share it with all the people.
My favorite memory is wearing hula hoops on the ring and I do this with the kids because I want to help others learn how to be friends.
I think the program is very important because it teaches the students how to do healthy activities and grow strong and live a long, happy life. Working with them is an amazing opportunity for us and them to make new friends. I really enjoyed having the opportunity to teach the students ring toss, but make it fun with the number they could spread the rings over.
And what's really fun is I've gotten to go in and see it in action and everyone's having fun in the way they do the stations and rotate. It's, it is a joy to see how they connect with one another and their teachers, but they, they're friends, so.
Mrs. Mary O'Doherty, our West physical therapist said, "I have observed, I have observed all of our students develop friendships, become more motivated to actively participate in the gross motor activities and develop confidence in completing gross motor skills. Our peer buddies demonstrate empathy and kindness and get so excited when our students with special needs and various abilities complete a new skill. It is truly heartwarming to witness."
All right, so our plans right now, so we have our peer PE and our hope is that we can move to an actual Unified Sports, which is a national organization. We have that right now at LBMS and DIS. And if we, what we are trying to apply and hopefully, once we apply, we would be the first elementary to be starting that. So, our hope is that we can continue to build this program and hopefully start to get other elementary schools to also do that. So, that way we can have field trips or go to different things and work together to not only have our awesome, wonderful peer group and students, but also students from around our county and nearby. So, that is our goal moving forward. This is just the start. So, these are pioneers right here, helping us create a wonderful program. And we're really thankful for the staff also. Mallory Hayworth, Brittany Pratt, Simon O'Doherty, they've all been a huge part of trying to implement this. And Val Pace had started it up at LBMS and has moved it to DIS. And so, now we're at the elementary. So, we're so proud of you guys, all of our kiddos, the students that are part of that class too. The growth that we're seeing everybody make when we create these opportunities for our kids is really wonderful. So, thank you. You guys did a great job. You should be very proud of yourself.
Anything from?
I think it's super to hear a lot of the things that you're doing with your new friends. I know when Molly and Matthew presented, they had some suggestions for us, what we might be able to do to help them. Do you have any suggestions, anything that we could do to help you do what you're doing?
Guys have any good ideas or some activities that we could, we could do in class? Yeah.
Football.
Football. We'll talk, we'll talk to Ms. Pratt and Mr. O'Doherty about that. So, yeah.
I think, um, we, instead of like doing soccer, we could just like pass the ball with our feet instead of like.
Kick it so hard, yeah. Well, these are all skills we can work on and we'll keep working with the teachers and, and see what the different needs are and what we're trying to do to develop those, those activities, okay? Okay. All right, you guys are the ones that make the difference.
Get one more.
I was just going to ask, are you guys all in fourth grade?
No, we're in third.
Oh, okay, third grade. So, you're going to do this, carry it on then next year?
Yeah, what, the way it worked this year, as we were trialing it, we looked at the schedule and we were able to see that third graders had recess at that time that we had our modified PE class. And so, we talked to some students and said, you know, here's the deal, you could go out to recess or this is a really neat opportunity for you to be a part of. And they all said yes.
Nice.
Great. So, yep, so natural born leaders, right?
Yes.
So, yeah.
One thing, Mrs. Mecha, the other thing is, you know, with these kids here, just to your parents, I mean, for you being able to take your own time to go in and work with some of your classmates is just a huge thing, huge statement of your character and how you treat people. And we're really proud of what you're doing and your parents should be as well. And our staff here, I just have to point out, Mrs. Mecha is presenting. We saw Mr. Plantner a moment ago, but we have Mrs. Tucker here in the front row, Mr. Sam Filippo over here, I think Mrs. Maurice is also here as well. And I mentioned Mrs. Kelber. But thank you all for the planning that had to happen in order to give these kids the opportunity to do these things. So, really grateful for what you're doing. Welcome, Miss Dave.
Parents, I am sure you would love to sit through rest of the board meeting, but truly, I know your busy schedules, this would be a great time for you to head out of your life.
Thank you for coming.
Then thank you so much. Fantastic job, students and staff.
So, and by the way, looking at this, it looks like Otto has a birthday coming up as well. Happy birthday.
Yeah. It'll be a pop thing by the 40s, I mean, it's fantastic.
Ready to go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're going to go ahead and unmute and return to the meeting. Next up is hearing of the public. Our Board of Education meetings are public meetings. This means it is a meeting to publicly conduct our business in front of the public. There are times public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in public debate and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had an opportunity to do so. Recognized speakers cannot transfer or delegate their speaking time to others. If a person wants to speak longer than three minutes, at the end of the three-minute period, the speaker needs to stop. If additional people wish to speak, they will be given the opportunity to speak. If no one else would like to speak, the original speaker may continue for an additional three-minute period. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Oh, it's now, King. Seeing none, let's go ahead on to the approval of the minutes.
Did you get everything I said?
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I have, yes.
Yes. A voice vote on this one, correct? Yes.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, minutes are approved. Dr. Goggins.
Okay, going into my report, I would like to start off by asking Katie Manila to, and Mr. Woods, come on up to the podium as well. So, this evening on our board agenda, we do have a resolution, which is 7C for a new school counselor at Westlake High School. And the team has met with and is recommending Katie Manila to take that position. Mr. Woods is here with her. Now, he is going to a soccer game after this. I know he wanted to point out.
On the casual demons. Still here in soccer.
Yeah, so, so that's why he's a little more casual. We can get the camera to go right to him. But I'll tell you a little bit about Katie. Katie went to a wonderful college called Bowling Green State University that produces incredible educators and received her master's degree from John Carroll. And she's currently working as a school counselor in Garfield Heights. She does coach cross-country and she is currently in-season coaching softball. Now, we were concerned originally that she wasn't going to be able to make tonight due to having a game that was scheduled, but I think she canceled it previously and it would have been canceled anyway due to the current conditions. We're really excited to have Katie come and join us. I know I mentioned a moment ago that Katie went through a team process with Rob's group as well as with Mr. Mayber and others. I sat down with her, me and Mr. Wilson interviewed her and just very impressed with everything she brings to the table. I don't know if Mr. Woods wants to add anything that you'd like to say.
Well, it was funny after, Katie doesn't know this, but after walking Katie out, I came back to the team and it's the, what do you think? And they're like, she's awesome. So, we're really lucky to have Katie and I, Katie went on a European trip right after we interviewed her. So, I appreciate Katie probably, maybe mom chipped into that self-onout, I don't know. But allowing us to talk while she was in Europe to make this happen. So, we're really excited for Katie. We have a little swag here in the board.
Thank you, I'm so excited.
We're excited to have her join our team.
Well, I tell you, Mr. Mayber and I were, we were driving somewhere and we drove, actually drove by Garfield Heights High School and we were on spring break and you were in session and we're like, why don't we just pick her up now? Just stop in and say, we're here to claim Katie and then just take her back to the high school. Katie, I don't know if you wanted to address the board or say anything?
Sure, I just wanted to say thank you so much. I'm so excited for the opportunity. After I met Mr. Woods the first time around, I called my mom and was like, I am so excited. I love it. The great vibes at the high school. It was so awesome. And I'm just really excited and thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of your district.
And I'll tell you, Katie, you're, you're spot on. I know teasing Mr. Woods for how he's dressed, but he's come in and has been a fantastic principal and really just excited with everything that he's doing there and the team he's building to make that happen. BOE members, if there's any, any questions for Katie or anything?
Welcome aboard. Yeah. Other than saying BG is a good school with John Carroll. Fantastic plan to go.
They're both equally as great in their own way.
Yeah, GG's better.
Yeah. Obviously. No, I'm really excited and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity and I'm excited to get started.
Well, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Uh, just continuing, a couple of different things. We've really been focusing on a lot of different career tech. I know we've had conversations about taking advantage of what the governor has released for career technical grants. We are still moving forward with our Westshore Partners to do that. Last week, Miss, it's actually Mrs. Musselman and I went and visited Lorraine County Community College. Um, last week, Miss, uh, it's actually Mrs. Musselman and I, um, went and visited uh, Lorraine County Community College and their MEMS program, which is the microengineering of uh, really small microchips and it was a really nice program and that's one of the programs that Westshore is um, submitting a grant to start. Uh, we really hope that that gets accepted and we're able to move forward with that, but I think it's, it just emphasizes the different opportunities that we have in our area, I know we went out to LCC but we do have our Tri-C Westshore and other partners around that we could be doing a whole lot more with and we're excited to go forward with that. Um, the other thing I just wanna mention is, as we're sitting here in April twenty-fourth, our school year is coming to a close very quickly and uh, we will be at our commencement ceremony at the end of May, actually. And um, uh, so this is the time of year where it really goes fast, but it really gets fun. Where I think we have National English Honor Society, I think that's next week. Um, just event after event and, and celebration after celebration. Um, another rite of passage as we go through this year, uh, is the Green and White Review, uh, which happened this past weekend, I did attend on Friday night, uh, it was a whole lot of fun, I, I love I love each of the events that we have for different reasons, as we go into music alum mode, we're gonna see um, our programs from the elementary school up through the high school under the direction of our staff. The Green and White Review is special because the kids plan it, the kids plan their act, they choose what means something to them and uh, then perform. And we had any, everywhere from uh, a student doing um, yo-yos, we had dance groups, we had singers, it was just a, you know, students playing the piano or another instrument, the cello group. It was just, it was, it was a whole lot of fun uh, to see and I really enjoyed the cultural component as well, and when you look like the first five acts, we had um, um, uh, a, a girl playing a Chinese flute, which, and I probably don't know the specific, the technical name of it, but it was such a beautiful sound, and then you had um, uh, two girls doing a traditional Indian song and then you had a girl uh, who was Irish step dancing, so it just went, it was just, it was really cool to kinda see um, that when students get a chance to choose the different things that they were doing, so it was a whole lot of fun and uh, I appreciate I know we had uh, new people who were helping organize that this year and they did a wonderful job with it. Um, other than that, uh, just looking at my agenda items, I can go through those as we're uh, discussing voting, but um, that is my report for this evening.
Fantastic. Any question?
On the uh, can you say anything more about the MEMS program, anything you would add to it, I, I know that I toured uh, Lorraine County College recently, I wasn't aware that they did the, the one stick there as well, but I did, they're actually, are they actually? What's that?
Yeah.
Sure.
It's tucked away.
I don't know, are they actually making workable chips there?
Yeah, that's, that's what they're doing, is they're working on your chips, I mean, it was incredible, we actually got to a clean room. Uh, we had to get all garbed up, was able to do this viable as well.
Okay.
Um, and so what's nice is it's so hands-on, they build it at a level where you don't need how the rest of these, you know, high, high, high level math classes. Um, and the kids are in there and they are working from the second they walk in. And then what's great is that the end of the program is I think the percentage of how many that actually have a, a career, you know, a job lined up. That is their goal, is they know exactly what these companies are expecting and they have partnerships with these companies and they get them a place to, most of them, play a job as, as their head.
Thanks, I know you probably are aware, Dr. Goggins, including this weekly report, the director reports and uh, the articles coming out of Columbus and the various types of educational backgrounds that'll be necessary because of their intel. Uh, but pretty amazing.
Yeah, a couple items that, that, just to, to talk about, and Mrs. Musselman mentions the, the clean room. And I, it, it, once you hear this, it makes sense, but when, with, one of the things they were discussing with us is how important it is for kids to either actually work in a clean room or a simulated clean room. And the reason is because if they are going to go into this field, they will be like head to toe and, and, and I, I can't remember if they called it duck suit or, or, or what it is, but bunny suit, I think it was. And, and you would have the glasses on, you would have a mask on, you'd have thick rubber gloves, the, the booties on your shoes, and, and so some people, they say, well, like the idea of doing the soldering and the work and that sort of thing. But when they actually gear up, they're like, I can't do this for a day, like I wouldn't be able to, and it's good for them to know if they can't work in those conditions at that time, instead of going through a simulated program where they actually didn't you know, put on the garb that they, they need to use, so it's really, it's really, really cool and they have different stations doing different things, like they have one, uh, that's quality control and inspection. Where um, you would have a microscope and you would be looking at a chip or a series of chips to see if there's any uh, errors or faulty type of uh, construction inside there, so there's, there's a whole lot that goes into it, but a lot of soldering. And uh, I, I think doing the, the manipulatives really tiny is, is
There's a certification level, associate level, bachelor's level, they are all those, um, so it's very
Which is unique because community colleges do not offer very many bachelor programs.
Mr. Wilson, you have a comment?
No, I just, I didn't say what Amanda said, it, it, there's such a drive because of what Mr. Krass said about intel being in the area that they are now, um, they can't keep up with demand, so a lot of community colleges in Ohio are sort of uh, really plugging along with this to get the opportunity and uh, the job placement rates. The gentleman put up a bunch of things on a, a bunch of opportunities, he said, I have twenty-nine students that just finished, he goes, I had seventy-eight job offers.
Oh wow.
He goes, I don't have enough people, so um, it's, it's really a good opportunity to make a really good wage and that age, um, with real opportunity to turn down.
So where do you think Westshore is in their uh, program? As far as getting that, that, a program like that rolling over?
We actually put a grant in, that was one of the grants we wrote and that's being submitted in May.
Okay.
So hopefully that will be accepted. Another part that was interesting to me when um, Mr. Wilson was talking about the employers, uh, two things, number one, when intel comes to town, it's not just intel. Um, there are companies that it's almost like feeders off of intel, they said there's like three companies wherever intel goes, these three company, companies go to. But the second opportunity that makes a lot of sense again, but I didn't think of is we've learned a lot with this computer chip shortage that happened and there's a very large um, industry out there for repairing current chips, so you have your manufacturers that create them and then you'll have other companies now that will repair them. And, and it could even be something, there's a company that just opened in Lakewood that they purchased from Best Buy, the returned uh, game consoles, PlayStation four, Xbox, Nintendo, the, the switches and Nintendos that they have and they need people in there to repair them and get into those motherboards and, and actually do the work on those as well, so it's so much more than just the one chip development type of thing and, and it's just really interesting to see.
I'm curious, um, any, any idea like what kind of starting pay, you know, they're getting?
What, what they share with us will start from fifty-five thousand to seventy thousand.
Very good, thank you.
I like the idea that there are jobs available because, uh, you know that saying, if you teach a man to fish, you know, uh, somebody said, well, if you teach a man to fish, you've gotta make sure that there's enough fish in the lake then for them to catch. And I thought, uh, you know, and we talk about the job availability in the area. I mean, that's awesome that there are jobs available, but
Well, one last final thing is another meeting that we had is Paul and I, um, were at a luncheon. Uh, Max Miller, one of our congressmen, he held a luncheon at Tri-C uh, main campus and um, his big push is trying to get more businesses coming to northeast Ohio and uh, it was a gentleman from, I think it was Jobs Ohio, that organization where his comment was that tax breaks are great, you know, kinda to your point with enough fish, where he said, he said tax breaks are great, but if you give someone a tax incentive and they move their business here, but they don't have employees to actually do the job, then the tax break means nothing because they can't achieve what they want to achieve. And so that's another um, uh, goal that'll, that, that's out there is to make sure that not only our students are ready to leave and if they're going to go straight into a career, it's actually something they're going to be able to get a job in. And, and uh, so it's kinda matching that to, to create a workforce, to attract more companies and, and to be able to keep that cycle going. It's good.
Mr. Hopkins?
Thank you, um. First and foremost, um, as we get into May, we do have our required five-year forecast. Uh, so I would propose to the board, I believe we're set up for a work session on May uh, ninth, oh, not May eighth, May eighth, um, and I would propose to the board, uh, allowing me to present the five-year forecast at that time. Um, we've been sticking with work sessions as the first meeting, so we wouldn't vote on it at the time, we voted on it at the regular meeting, uh, but it would allow, allow that opportunity presented and then have questions and revise if necessary before the next vote. Um, along those lines, um, uh, it looks like we'll be able to meet in a finance committee meeting on May fourth, Thursday the fourth. Um, and we'll be, uh, go over the uh, forecast with the finance committee first uh, and then be able to uh, present uh, the, the forecast and draft format to the entire board uh, on May eighth then. Um, beyond that, I just have three uh, resolutions tonight, so I'm happy to move into those if it so pleases the board. Uh, so the first one I have is our uh, tax, uh, tax levies, the uh, sending the rates by the budget commission, so typically this is done in March of each year. Uh, if you recall from last year, uh, Kegga County filed for an extension, a county-wide extension, uh, as they're the ones who set the rates and, and send it to us, uh, they filed for an extension again this year, so we're approving them in April. Uh, this is not the actual rates that are paid. These are voted millage, uh, it's a requirement of the law to uh, uh, approve the tax rates. Uh, the one area that does change on this specifically is our uh, bond issue. Bond issues are different than uh, voted millage, when we vote on a bond issue, essentially the community is saying uh, in order to pay back our bondholders, we authorize uh, any amount of taxes uh, to be collected in order to uh, stay uh, out of default on our debt. So, we change the rates each and every year. Uh, I am happy to report that we are reducing the bond rate uh, slightly, so where we're currently, or let, currently we stand at uh, three point uh, six um, mils, this would drop to three point four five mils, that's the only change going from one year to the next. Uh, all of our other levies are continuous levies, so nothing's dropping off or changing other than the bond. Uh, and then I also have, then a now certificates, if you have any questions, please let me know, and then my third resolution is making a correction, we had a, a staff member who worked uh, back in October for an ELL night, uh, that it was an oversight that they were not approved, I am asking the board to approve that, uh, to make that uh, correct for this employee. Uh, it's for a couple, a, a couple of hours, it's not a significant uh, piece to the board. Um, I would ask that the board would consider uh, the tax rate resolution on its own, but could combine B and C if it so pleases the board.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve item six A?
Second.
Discussion.
So, does the bond retirement fund dropping, does that, that direct impact to the local taxpayers?
Uh, it will, because they do pay uh, you know, millage on it, so um, now again, when, when we look at, you know, uh, point one-five mils, okay, trying to do quick math off the top of my head, that's about five dollars a year on a hundred thousand dollar home. So, it's not something that, you know, it's going to be significant for your average taxpayer, but as a community as a whole, it's a savings, we only collect what's necessary to pay our bonds. Um, it's not money that if we collect more, we don't get to use it for general fund or, or for PI, it's strictly used for payment of debt, so there is a reduction for the community as a whole, um, which is always a good thing, but it, it would be a, a small one for an average taxpayer.
So, what drives that, right?
Uh, so it's um, based on our uh, debt, our debt schedules, so we have our bonds um, they're worked through our investment banker, uh, to have different maturities uh, throughout uh, most of our bonds that we have currently outstanding, uh, were passed on thirty-seven year issues, so um, during that time, it's not like we have all um, you know, if we did a, a thirty-three point six million dollar elementary school uh, on a thirty-seven year payment, it's not that we only pay interest for thirty-six years and then one block, you know, a large block payment in, in year thirty-seven, we're paying debt uh, as well as, as well as interest, so principal and interest over that entire time period. And it's structured in a way that we have payments trying to keep a similar amount each year for the community, so we're not going up uh, or down, you know, significantly, but we were trying to keep a balanced amount uh, uh, throughout the uh, term of that bond. In this situ- situation, as our property values increase, okay, uh, the millage can decrease because uh, it is, uh, it does adjust, unlike the household nine-twenty with our other levies where our millage would go down. Uh, this goes go down, so, but we're able to collect the same amount as needed, so um, it is decreasing this time because of a uh, increase in property values.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Craft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Purnat?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a res- uh, motion to, for six B and C?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, Hopkins, could you give a little bit more background on the Doubletree appraisal?
Good question.
What you're hoping to?
Thank you for asking.
Get.
Um, so uh, the uh, hotel had uh,
Was Holiday Inn, right?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah.
Uh, the hotel asked for a decrease in their property values and we're currently in a uh, in a dispute over the value of the property. Um, it's a significant enough dispute that we are, file a counterclaim and we're going back and forth through the process of the Board of Tax Appeals and the Board of Revision um, in order to move forward, one of those steps for us uh, is uh, our uh, attorney did not agree with their assessed, uh, their appraisal of the property uh, that they're using, so we asked, he asked to get an appraisal uh, on our end, this was a, it's a two-part appraisal, uh, this is actually for the second part. We, uh, the amount is, was split in half, so uh, the full appraisal was uh, almost nine thousand dollars or eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, at first, what we did is we asked them to review the original appraisal and tell us uh, if they agreed with it or, you know, if it was sizably off. Um, after reviewing it, they believed that it was uh, significant enough, um, that and asked to move forward with the full appraisal so that we could present evidence as we uh, contest those values. So unfortunately, as uh, property values, if there's disagreements on property values, um, you know, we, we know the old adage of, of real estate, it's only worth what someone's willing to pay for it. Um, so uh, in this case, you, you fight over experts' opinions uh, through appraisals. Um, but we do feel that it's uh, a, a significant enough uh, decrease, now I do wanna point out, um, you know, things have changed with these, as we talked about pilot agreements and, and things like that. Um, when we uh, uh, contest values now, uh, we're not necessarily contesting them to have direct benefit to the school. While we have some benefit to the school because of some prior taxes, they would have paid, but going forward, okay, all this will do is better distribute the pie of taxes. The amount that we get doesn't change, but you know, if you're paying less than your fair share because you're undervaluing your property, that means the other taxpayers um, are paying a higher share. What we're trying to do is make sure that people are paying on the correct value so that it is uh, a fair to all of the taxpayers involved.
So when you mean our share versus like the cities, uh?
No, thi- this would be uh, your share as a personal taxpayer.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, when, when you talked about uh, the district, it's not just benefiting this.
No, it would benefit all taxpayer, or all taxing authorities.
Right, there, which would be like city gets a piece, county gets a piece.
Yes, yeah, because as you look at your property taxes, you'll have port authority, zoo, uh, you'll have library, uh, uh, city, schools, county, uh, there's several uh, taxing authorities that all charge. Uh, there's several uh, taxing authorities that all charge uh, on your taxes.
So it's not like, so what you're saying is they would all benefit.
They would, but all of your, the entire community benefits as well as taxpayers because now each taxpayer is paying a little less.
They're not subsided.
Because they're not subsided, someone undervalued.
So. Um, roughly, what's, what's the uh, the, the delta between the, what they say, what we might think?
I can get that for you and look that up, but I, off the top of my head, I, I would be uh, remiss in getting you on.
Yeah.
It would not be.
I don't watch it shoot off.
Yeah.
Shoot it to cuff. Shoot it hip. You know what I'm saying? Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Panukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Dr. Dragon.
Okay, I will go not through every single one of these, but I'll hit on a few of them. First one, as always, uh, accepting gifts and donations from Lesko Architecture. Uh, they donated a Canon plotter and scanner as well as ink cartridges and a new cutting blade uh, to Westlake High School. It is a giant, giant printer that uh, they can use to
Being used by our architecture?
You know, I, I think Rob got a hold of it.
Okay.
And and uh, and he, he has plans for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Use giant, like blueprints?
Yeah, you could get blueprints, those kind of things. But I think you can also use it for posters and and other things like that, too. Um, Pete, yeah, do you know more about it?
It's set up in the world's newspaper office.
Okay.
And we believe it's being used for posters and other things.
Okay.
Is this a new printer or something they were?
It's something that we were like selling at six or seven years old. It still works, okay? Um, and they did give us some supplies for it.
Nice.
So, thank you for that. Um, letter B, uh, this is, I, I'm gonna lean on Amanda for a moment just uh, to talk about this for a second, since it is uh, a very large, when we're talking uh, the funding that goes towards this, it's a very significant amount. Can you talk for a moment about kind of the process that you went through to get the math books?
Yeah.
Do you want to come up here or do you want to stay over there?
Whatever.
Come on over. While she's taught, while she's getting to the podium, letter C. Letter C is, is your agenda item, Katie, and I'm bringing that up because I dropped the ball and I did not mention your mother who's here with you uh, this evening. And you do have your mother here and I understand you are a former teacher as well.
Yes.
And what did you teach?
Twenty-three years at U of U, right? As well as computer teacher.
Awesome.
All right. And and just so you know, uh, Katie did talk about you uh, in the interview and and mentioned that you were a computer science teacher as well and it was like a second career type of thing for you, so.
You're so tired of her.
Yeah, it was a complete lapse and I'm hoping to correct me at this point when we get to letter C. And and when we're done with letter C again, just like the rest of the folks, please, you don't have to stay. Take your mom out to dinner. So uh, Amanda, we can talk a little bit, talk about just the, the process that you went through.
Sure. For. So this actually started back in December of twenty twenty-one. Um, we started visiting Avon to look at a program called CPM and Bridges, um, which is a very hands-on program. Um, very quickly after those visits, we realized that it was already December and there was no way that we could make this decision in a couple of months. Um, so we began just looking at online resources um, throughout the grade levels, focusing more on secondary to start with. Um, and then we moved into this school year. So this school year, we started in September and Paul and I pulled um, all of our math teachers from gate grades K through twelve, starting in September and through December, that was strictly standards work. Uh, we want to make sure that we were picking resources that matched the standards and not making our standards match resources. So we had a lot of discussions, um, a lot of time to just adjust pacing guides. What does this standard mean versus this standard? What are we looking for for mastery, et cetera, to make sure we had a common understanding before we went to pick resources? So again, it was about two days per grade level um, that Paul and I met with um, every math teacher in the district. That lasted, like I said, through about December. In October, we started bringing in vendors. Um, so we look at our main four vendors um, throughout the state of Ohio. And we pulled them on Halloween, actually, and they all came in and gave our presentations to our secondary grade levels, seven through twelve. That's a very overwhelming day because you're just being shot at information for, you know, about two hours per vendor for an eight hour day. So after that, we then followed back up with all of our seventh through twelfth grade teachers. Very quickly, we determined our top two. It's, it's pretty quick as you're, we know what our students need, we know our standards and what the program has to offer. But from there, then it takes a lot of time. So then it's a lot of digging, um, a lot of time working with their demo codes that they give us in order to access the online resources, their printed resources, actually piloting cla- um, classroom lessons. And then we took them to actually visit their top two choices in neighboring districts. We did the exact same thing with K five. They had their vendor presentations in January and then throughout January and February, we pulled them probably three to four times um, per grade level, K twelve, to really make sure that what we were choosing is what our students needed. And then I think the crucial thing was going and observing and to other districts and being able to talk to teachers, give us the good, give us the bad. Um, does it fit in our schedule? You know, some of the programs are excellent, but unless you have a ninety minute block of math, you can't do the program justice. And that was great to hear, you know, that helped make our decisions. So at the end of the day, um, we are thrilled with where we landed because you will see that we have McGraw-Hill Reveal, um, that has been adopted for grades one through eight. So for the first time that I know of in recent history, we have a consistent math program. Um, the data will track with the kids, grades one through eight. The teachers can access resources in a multiple grade levels. Parents have exactly one online platform to use and they can be used to it as, you know, same with the kids um, used to it um, as they go on. It also links to MAP, um, the Reveal program, which is a big selling point for grades one, eight. We can upload our MAP data three times a year. And then at the beginning of every unit, the MAP platform, or I'm sorry, the um, Reveal platform will tell the teachers which students are missing prerequisite skills based on their MAP data to succeed in that upcoming unit. And then it can prescribe them online practice and tutorials to get them ready for that upcoming unit. Um, it's a very hands-on program, but it also has the um, you know, here's how, here's how to do it. Here's how, you know, you have kids on both sides and and Damian was on this committee and he brought this up at our, our last meeting. Every lesson, the, it presents it to the teacher, you can present it two ways. Very, very hands-on and very, very prescriptive. And that might change from day to day and lesson to lesson, depending on the student group that you have. It could change for one group in your room versus another group in your room. So the amount of, of um, time that those publishers spent making sure that this program meets all the kids' needs, which just blew us away. The high school uh, was very much between Reveal and then Envisions, which is the program they chose to adopt. And the main reason they chose Envisions over Reveal was again, that online component. They have been using a program called My Math Lab or Math Excel for school, it's uh, similar programs that outside of MAP, because they don't use MAP as much at the high school, links directly with their program. So it does the same type of thing. It gives them prescriptive feedback. Um, it links the standards to the lessons. It gives them individualized homework assignments with automatic feedback. And so the programs themselves were, in terms of the resources, were very similar. But the needs of the online resources varied between the, the K eight band and the high school band, which is why you see the McGraw-Hill Reveal and Savas um, Envisions at the high school. But it was, it was a ton of work. The people, the teachers on the math committees, um, they worked very, very hard. Um, again, a lot of pullout days, which is tough to do, a lot of time away from their kids, but then they piloted the lessons and they got to actually see it in action before we made the decision. So.
Can you talk about um, bringing in the parent group at the end?
Yes, so then the final step, once we thought we, you know, we had our final resources, we brought in, um, we invited parents from every building. Um, we had about a group of ten, um, plus Barb and Liz, um, joined us. And we actually, I went through just what I just talked about, the process of, you know, this was not a light decision. This, this took a lot of time, a lot of effort to make sure that we made the right choice. And then what was nice is that the teachers that were on each committee presented um, exactly what went into this, why they like it, why, what they're seeing, the needs of their kids right now, how this program meets those needs. And so the teachers got to present and we had um, the actual vendors on Zoom, they were available if we had any questions, um, you know, from the parents that we couldn't answer yet because we're still learning the program. So now we start the process of just, you know, professional development, making sure everyone knows the program and is, is ready to implement it.
Question.
Go ahead.
Is the resources, are they electronic and printed textbook?
All of them are both. Yep, all of them have the, the, the printed textbook. Actually, the, the one eight reveal, every, there's no such thing as a one eight hardcover textbook anymore, even from, from all the vendors we looked at, they're all consumable workbooks. And then, but they have access to everything online as well.
Okay, thank you.
Cool thing that impressed me with especially Savas, the high school program. Um, it's a parent of a high schooler who every so often is trying to help remember geometry from eighteen years ago. Um, but on page with problems, there's a QR code in the top right-hand corner. And, and can I literally pulled it open and it takes you to a lesson on how to do it?
Yeah.
So that I thought was really neat. In the um, elementary, they, one through eight programs has something similar.
They have a parent portal as well.
For parents.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. Figured with that kind of investment hearing, uh,
Right.
uh, yeah, an explanation, a little more detailed explanation would be appropriate.
And she gets excited at the math books too.
Well, she's a former math teacher, I know. I have, I have her, her former science teacher.
Right?
Right.
Um, a few others that I want to hit is uh, letter E. We've talked about this before, but it's uh, official on here, Katie Easton moving to the high school for the um, registrar position. Letter F included in there is Kristen Rice, who has already started at the high school um, and completed her first week last week. Um, and uh, she's replacing Katie Easton in, in the counselor's office. Um, and then the other one to, to touch on, um, letter L, uh, we, we do try and stay um, a couple of years ahead with our calendars, uh, may adjust slightly. We are working on, we're, we're talking about the ability to um, add a couple more professional days. Uh, reason for that is um, getting substitute teachers is very difficult. The pool is very, very small now and everybody's competing in the same pool. Um, so we are looking to um, uh, have some, a couple of professional days added throughout and we'll talk about where we're going to put them once we uh, uh, agree upon adding that. So this may change a little bit, but overall, it's, it's the the calendar that we're recommending.
I'm really not ready to start thinking about the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar year.
Calendar senior year, or.
Exactly.
Player's senior year.
Their senior year, which is why. Look at the moment here.
Yeah, but I think parents like to see this um, a couple of years in advance so that they can plan different things.
Exactly.
Vacation.
Um, vacations, yeah, for sure.
And that's the big one.
Um, but that's it. And if there's any other specific questions, I felt those are the ones to um, highlight. Um, and if it pleases the board, we can do seven A separate to accept the donations and uh,
We do Katie's.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Just because that's, that's the one, that's definitely the one you're voting no on, right? So.
Right.
And we'll do. Um, yeah, we'll do, so then we'll do seven, eight, might as well do B and C separate as well and then D through N. Right.
Okay, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion for seven A to accept gifts?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion other than, thank you to Lesko Architecture for this wonderful plotter and scanner. We'll host the printer. Roll call.
Craft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a motion for seven B for the math instruction?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I did, I did like that, the parent meeting at the end because I think they, uh, they had some good comments. Uh, and.
Great question.
Yeah.
There were questions that gave us the answers, things that we didn't, you know, we were still learning and so having that.
And thank you to the entire team, Mr. Heddings. I know you were heavily involved and just so many great staff members involved and just feedback and the, the time.
Now the time that Camille spends spending all this order, so.
So you can fix it out. And you did say, Damian, that you intentionally got the most complicated ones to order. Oh, darn it, that I just. Yeah, most itemized.
Roll call.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
And would anyone like to make a motion for seven C for?
Second.
Discussion? Welcome aboard, Katie. Excited to have you join Westlake Schools. Roll call.
Craft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And anyone like to make a resolution for seven D through N?
So moved, second.
Yeah. There. I don't like this note on that. I got it, but yeah.
Yeah, board docs changed the way they have us formatting on the iPad on smaller screen, so it's
And it's.
difficult to navigate.
Yes.
Did we get a motion?
I have a motion in a second.
Discussion.
It's good to see that the girls uh, high school craft team is getting some national exposure going out to Pennsylvania uh, and one of the other places. So I think they're going to have another great year this year and good luck to them and all these spring athletes. So.
The other nice part is those are privately funded too.
Either that's.
Yeah, it is.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stole?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now is our second hearing of the public. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing none or comments?
Just want to remind everybody that uh, election day is May second and the only item on the ballot is the library.
Right.
So I'm afraid people won't bother to go out to vote for one item, but it's important that we
Right now.
vote for that.
And especially with um, all the new voting rules. Remember that uh, there's no early voting the day before the election. So if you do need to vote early down at the board of elections, you cannot do it on the Monday.
Right. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hopkins to give a little update on the baseball softball. Um, we briefly touched about it.
Certainly, um, I, I spoke to Mr. Kosovar uh, this morning, actually about it. And uh, Mr. Kosovar, feel free to jump in if I, if I incorrectly uh, state anything. Um, we were approached by uh, the architecture firm um, and the engineers, they would like to do some core sampling. Um, Dave worked with, uh, or Mr. Kosovar worked with them as well as our athletic department uh, to see if there were other options of maybe doing some uh, core sampling around the edges um, or keeping it out of the playing area, maybe just fall territory. Um, they felt that it's in the best interest of the district to uh, do actual core sampling on the infield and a run as well as around the dugout area. In discussions with the athletic department uh, and our, our coaches, um, we feel it's in the best interest to push off that core sampling until uh, at least May fifteenth. Um, at that point, while the fields may be used for practices, uh, games who are done by May fifteenth and any tournament play, uh, O H S A tournament play would then be on neutral sites. So, you know, our fields would be used for practice, but and, and we may have some issues with core sampling at that point, but it would not affect gameplay. And so to avoid uh, uh, any impact on this season's uh, we're pushing that, that uh, core sampling back. Uh, based on that information, we're being told that it sets everything back about two weeks. So uh, not something that we're uh, terribly concerned about. Uh, we know and, and as we've discussed, um, our goal is uh, to have this uh, ready for next uh, baseball season. So really by the end of this calendar year. So we have time as we work through these little hiccups. I'm sure we'll have more as we work through this, but it is not impacting our schedule of being open for uh, next baseball softball season. So that's where we're at.
Um, Mr. Kosovar, could you give a a little uh, Um, Mr. Kovac, Kovac, could you give a little um, explanation if you know as to the importance of the core samples? I, I get it if you're doing a parking lot or you're building a big, big building.
So the reason for core samples are to see what the stability of the subsoil is um, underneath the product that's been in long field. Um, we have experienced um, um, soils that are unstable. We experienced them both in the construction of the high school, but also in the football field when we did the turf project there. Uh, when they find that, they stabilize it with a lime uh, product to make sure that if there are any vehicles that drive out on it, it doesn't create waves and rocks, things like that. Um, you wouldn't think there'd be a vehicle that would be heavy enough on uh, one of our play fields, but there are the possibilities of having like the ambulance and things like that in case someone's injured. So they do the testing to make sure the soils are, are.
Would it potentially increase any cost if uh,
It's.
It's significant.
It would, yeah. I mean, if you have to do line stabilization, there's, there's a different type of stabilization based on what they recommend. Uh, that would be an added cost uh, above and beyond. Uh, also, as we look at uh, the uh, core sampling would be around the dugout areas. We want to avoid any type of uh, uh, sinking of the dugouts uh, in the future or, or settling. Um, uh, so again, to prevent these things, our hope is that we can get ideally good core sampling back, but if not, we're able to address it before it becomes an issue in the future.
And the, the size of those core samples are?
I think be between eight and ten inches.
Oh, that big?
Yeah, they'll, they'll get a decent sample down there. Um, I wanna say, uh, well, for around the foundations, they'll, they'll go down probably around twenty-four, thirty-six inches. Out on the field will be a little bit.
But the width is only like a four-inch core.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that diameter.
Yeah, it'd be correct.
And uh, you'll just go back and patch them?
They'll, they'll take whatever they have out of there. They'll refill it, we'll, they'll go back over and um, just uh, groom it back up.
Thank you. I was just thinking about the summer leagues they, uh, play there for Westlake baseball league, so.
So we had a lot of cancellations this year due to the weather.
We've been fortunate in the spring so far. We had a good spring. Last year, we had a very bad spring. This year is really, this is the first week that's looking to have probably say, uh, some significant cancellations because we've had rain all weekend somewhere today, uh, that later this week, we're supposed to get even more. So but uh, we've been very fortunate and have had a good number of games so far.
Just a clarification, um, there probably won't be any summer um, games on those fields.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, that's good.
I know we have a way to go, uh, but been very optimistic in planning on construction. Is it typical that you have construction fencing all around uh, the baseball field and softball field during?
We haven't got to that point yet. Um, normally there is uh, fencing that will go around. Now, um, that's a pretty big area, so and we'll, we'll have uh, truck traffic at the west entrance to the site, going around the back of the building and then back out. So we haven't got to that degree of staging yet for the project, but we'll make sure that that is separate so that nobody wanders into it and gets anything.
And, and both fields are fenced in currently. So in areas where we can reuse existing, we'll use it until it needs to be torn down for uh, uh, those purposes.
I don't, I don't hedge uh, back there at night, uh, but we'll use our, our lights back there during construction as well. Um, I'm just, I, what's on my mind is when the high school is being built and we have the vandalism issues. Um, I just wanna make certain it's a costly project and just.
We, we do, we do have some uh, lighting on the building in the back. Um, if we do need to do something more, we can turn those on.
Okay.
Um, those won't be injected into the project though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other board comments? I have a few. Um, I got a lovely thank you letter from the Westlake Town Criers for our National Honor Society Easter egg hunt volunteers. And they did an exceptional job. Um, I believe most of you received this uh, email about Ethan Kandreski.
Absolutely.
And all of the opportunities he, um, he is involved with regarding uh, juvenile diabetes. And just fantastic story. Which was great to hear. Uh, the council PTA meeting last week was uh, great. May seventeenth is their installation luncheon at Uland's. If you've not had an opportunity to sign up, um, let me know and I can get you the link. Also, Merrill Johnson, who is our state board of education rep, attended the first part of the meeting. It was nice to see her out. Um, in Saturday morning, I attended Hidden and Plain Site, which was a joint effort between the council PTA, the Westlake Police Fire, West Shore, and they held it at the Achievement Center. And that was very informative and Lieutenant Dempsey did a great job. And Officer Cook gave some great statistics on crime of minors in the area and just sort of uh, all the different numbers. Um, and number of overdoses also uh, in Westlake and then comparison to your surrounding neighbors. And tho- those numbers were really good to see and just kinda gave you a good idea of where we are in the city and really can give you a sense of how well things are going in the city, you know, truthfulness. Uh, Music Hall mode is on May sixth and the Tom Hall Memorial Piece is gonna be later in the evening, I believe.
What's happening?
The, the memorial piece that was commissioned for music, for the.
I think they're gonna, I, I thought they were gonna do it.
At Music Hall mode, but it's in the evening that night, so. Um, that's what I've got. Any other board comments?
Had the opportunity over the weekend to attend a connecting for kids events, um, and see, um, and play uh, against uh, Crow Bowl or Gavitt.
Any board items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
I was gonna say roll call?
To adjourn at seven seventeen PM, Craft?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Herenot?
Yes.
Did you say? You are adjourned.
Yes.